Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 and I'm going to call the City Council's study session to order. Will you please rise with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, quick roll call and I'll start online. Kevin Loy.
Here.
Alan Henderson. Alan Henderson? Councilman Henderson? We'll come back. Councilwoman Kestie?
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Present.
Councilwoman Cock?
Present.
Councilwoman Burns?
Present.
Councilwoman Lavaca?
Here.
Okay, and I'll try once again. Councilman Henderson?
Here.
Oh, there we are. Okay, so everybody is here and present. We do not have any special guests, as I understand it. No, we're just going to jump right into unfinished business, which is the Comprehensive Plan, Chapter III, the Housing Elements and Strategies. And who's going to start us off here? Tom, are you going to start us off here? Okay.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. So in your packet is a... two things. One is the memo summarizing the Open House and Planning Commission meetings that we've had recently on the housing strategies. And the other item is a draft of... the latest draft of our Comprehensive Plan that also includes policies in Chapter III, the Housing Element. So tonight, what we're going to do is present to you from this memo. We'll first ask Nicole to summarize the workshop that we had with the Planning Commission, and then we'll ask Ashton to summarize the housing forum and the survey that was distributed. So at the back, the last page of that memo contains a list of the strategies that were preferred that came out of those sessions, but also within the memo is a list of all the strategies that we've been looking at. Tonight, we're not reviewing necessarily... well, we'll go over that information, but we're not necessarily tonight picking anything from that list. We're just simply presenting to you the information that we've gathered to date. What we do have are the policies in our... in Chapter III of the Comp Plan that are written, in a way, hopefully broadly enough, that when it comes time to develop our development regulations, that we can go back to the strategies that were supported, and there'll be work there hammering each of those out, running it through the Planning Commission, and then eventually to the City Council for your review and consideration. We've also asked Matt Covert from Facet to be here this evening to answer any specific questions you may have regarding the housing strategies. Again, this... the Comp Plan is a policy document, so we're not looking at specific strategies for adoption tonight. That's later work, but we do certainly want to make you aware of what we have been looking at to date. Let me see if I've got everything here enough. Oh, I also wanted to say that the reason that we're taking this extra time in our Comp Plan to look at this, I think we've talked about this before, is recent decisions that came out of the Growth Management Hearings Board that asked some of the cities and counties to take a closer look at how they intend to meet the housing gaps, if you will, that are popping up in different communities. And as you know, we have 0% to 30% is probably the most challenging of our income brackets to find housing options for, and then it goes up from there and it gets easier. We have a surplus of 100% and more, I believe we discovered, yes. So we're doing good there with the good housing, the easy stuff, but again affordability is what we're getting at and making sure that we can accommodate all income levels best we can. Let me see. Let me look at my notes here just a minute here. So yeah, just in sum, this is really just an informational session, but it's also an opportunity as far as the Comp Plan goes. You've got the draft there, and again drawing attention to the housing policies that are listed there. If there's any tweaks that you want to address, we're certainly open to hearing that. This is not your last opportunity, though. Your last opportunity for comments will be at the point when you're looking at the adoption of the ordinance for the Comp Plan. So we still have a whole, gosh, probably two, maybe month and a half left on that part. So you do have time, and we do want to hear from all of you, as we've heard from Planning Commission and members of our public. So let me see. Oh, the other thing that I wanted to add to your agenda, to your... I mean, excuse me, to your packet, was the memo that I put together regarding the 60-day review. So we're finally at that point where with some tweaks to this and whatever comes from tonight and our Planning Commission meeting on the 16th, we'll be hopefully at that point ready to send a draft of the Comp Plan to the Department of Commerce to start their 60-day review. Now, what that means is the Department of Commerce takes our draft, along with everybody else's that they're submitting, and distributes that to all the state agencies that have a potential interest in our plan. So Department of Ecology, Department of Transportation, all of those state agencies that would have an interest in, whatever chapter of our Comp Plan is their interest. We'd also... they'd also send it out to the various tribes for comment and to any federal agencies, should there be any federal issues here that would be of interest to them. It's a 60-day review, which is a lengthy amount of time. It doesn't stop work for us. We can come back to you, hopefully, on January 14th with a first read of the ordinance that would adopt the Comp Plan. That would simply be a first read, no action taken, but at least we could keep that ball rolling, you could see what is in the ordinance, and then come back to you with a second and final reading once we have approval of our Comp Plan and that all issues have been addressed. With our 60-day review, it is possible that we would hear back from some of those... any of those state agencies or organizations to address some aspect of the plan or require that we edit something, and of course, we'd make that known to you. This is also, as a reminder, a public document that any group could be reviewing, and as we learned from Mercer Island and Kitsap County and a few of the other places, there are groups out there that would take cities or counties to the Growth Management Hearings Board for, I don't know, some kind of a challenge. We hope that's not the case. We hope that what we've done with this extra time spent on the housing chapter, that we have met that concern, but kept it open enough that we can... or broadly enough that when it comes to developing the development regs, we have flexibility there with the different strategies that we want to pursue. So I think that was my whole spiel. Oh, also on the expedited review... oh, excuse me, on the 60-day review, we do have the option for asking for an expedited review. There's a process for that. We will probably ask for that. No guarantee we would get it, but if we don't ask for it, then we certainly wouldn't get it. So I think it would be better to have that expedited review, to hurry this thing up and get it done. Now, they are looking at a lot of Comp Plans from cities and counties that are on the same deadline as we are, so we're hoping it won't take too long. And that we can get back to you as quickly as possible, of course, get this done, then start working on the development regulations, which would probably take us through spring and probably around to June before we wrap that up. So what I'd like to do is ask Nicole now to provide us with an overview of the work that the Planning Commission did on this topic, and then to turn it over to Ashton, please.
Thank you, Tom. The Planning Commission has been really consistent about the direction they want to see Seidra Woolley take on housing. Overall, they support strategies that expand our housing variety, reduce regulatory hurdles, and create incentives to build and preserve affordable homes. They're especially interested in tools that produce results sooner rather than later and that are predictable, easy to administer, and fit with the character of Seidra Woolley. The big theme that we saw was gentle density, so small-scale options like cottage clusters, townhomes, and other middle housing types that add choices without dramatically changing the neighborhood feel. Commissioners also strongly supported approaches that preserve existing homes, allowing non-conforming residences to be reasonably improved with just a simple building permit, and encouraging reinvestment into established neighborhoods. They noted that infill development and really making use of our existing infrastructure is one of the most efficient ways to add housing. Tools like the multifamily tax exemption and unit lot subdivisions were highlighted as being especially useful for that. Commissioners also emphasized the importance on working closely with our developers who understand what actually makes projects feasible. From the development side, the message was clear: allow diverse housing forms, offer flexibility in lot sizes, avoid strict unit count caps, and make the permitting process straightforward and less costly, so creative housing solutions can happen. The Planning Commission favors practical strategies that expand housing choices while still respecting the neighborhood character. It'll be important for us to have clear, predictable regulations and design standards, allowing a wider range of housing types by right. At the same time, the commissioners did stress to be cautious about unintended consequences like pushing up market rate prices, creating environmental compliance issues, or overextending infrastructure and transit system capacity. Fee reductions or waivers, for example, should only happen after confirming city services can keep pace. There was shared concern about fee-in-lu programs or any strategy that could turn into a long-term code enforcement burden or result in disincentivizing housing production altogether. Even with these cautions, the overarching goal remains clear: to enable housing of various types to be built throughout the city. Expanding middle housing options in particular will help free up vacancy in existing lower-cost units and begin to relieve the shortage that we're experiencing at the low-income bracket. So with that, turn it over to Ashton.
Thank you, Nicole. So following the Planning Commission meeting, we hosted a housing forum at the Seidra Woolley Community Center just before Thanksgiving. And at that housing forum, we divided all of the attendees into five different groups. The neighborhoods were separated by neighborhood, or the tables were separated by neighborhood in case a particular policy arose in one neighborhood that was... received strong support where it received opposition in another neighborhood. That way, after adoption, we could craft our development regulations to match the preferences in each neighborhood. And so at the housing forum, our public comments were generally uniform, and there was a central theme of increasing affordability through voluntary policies that expand housing options rather than setting strict requirements for developers to satisfy. And we also, following the housing forum, offered a survey for any of the attendees in case that they wanted to provide their opinion anonymously. That way, in case there was any sort... that way, if they had fear of retaliation from their peers at the housing forum, that was a way that they could avoid that. And so several of the policies did receive support at the housing forum. Cottage clusters was a clear policy that was supported from the public, particularly in areas to the north where we have more vacant land rather than in-town where it's pretty built up, particularly in the Dukes Hill area where, as you know, Wildflower currently is right now, which is the most similar concept to our cottage cluster, though it's not an identical concept. Allowing duplexes on single-family residential lots was also supported. Most attendees at the forum felt that landowners should be able to build what they want and that duplexes match the community characters throughout the city. That includes the residential 5-zone, our lowest-density residential zone. The responses on our survey were a little more mixed compared to the housing forum. Some of the concerns that were brought up in the survey was the value of adjacent properties and how that allowing duplexes could impact existing property owners here in town. And the allowing duplexes on single-family residences expanded into allowing middle housing throughout all of our residential zones. The key difference here between allowing duplexes on our residential zones and middle housing would be allowing triplexes, quadplexes, cottages, as well as townhomes. An important thing to note that was brought up at these events was to make sure that housing is allowed at a scaled approach, similar to how we allowed parking earlier this year. For example, that could look like prohibiting townhouses in the R5-zone but allowing duplexes, which is a form of middle housing in all of our zones. One thing I wanted to note that was different from the Planning Commission was that rezoning was supported by the public pretty generally compared to the Planning Commission. There was a key difference here with rezoning at the neighborhood level, though. Areas on the northern part of town, Dukes Hill, the Evergreen neighborhood, so we're talking John Lainer Road and Fruitdale Road, were supportive of a rezone because it would increase the ability to add infill in that area. However, areas closer to here, like Seidra... the old town of Seidra, the old town of Woolley, downtown area, were not in favor of rezoning. They wanted to keep the established zones as they were. We also received support for allowing single wides, single-wide manufactured homes where double-wide manufactured homes are currently allowed. So single-wide manufactured homes are restricted to mobile home parks, and we allow double-wides on any residential lot in the city. This policy did receive some hesitation from the attendees because they were concerned about the quality of manufactured housing. It is not the same as stick-built, and they were also concerned about creating a cookie-cutter type of situation in the city where every single house looks the same because a single-wide is the same size. Residents also stated that allowing single-wide mobile homes where double-wides are allowed may not be the strongest policy for us to achieve our affordability deficit, and they felt that if the... that the city should take on more substantial policies to address affordability rather than allowing single wides on our double-wide lots. And that sort of expanded to the offering pre-approved ADU plans because a couple of the attendees suggested that we allow single-wide manufactured homes as an ADU. That would... manufactured homes are significantly cheaper than stick-built housing, and the cost of construction and the cost of labor is a serious barrier for the construction of ADUs and to achieve affordable housing. It was... it does share those same concerns as allowing single wides where double wides are allowed, the quality concerns and the cookie-cutter neighborhood concerns. However, offering pre-approved stick-built ADU plans may take out the design costs because architects and engineers are expensive. So if the city were to partner with a local architect and a local engineer to design ADU plans and potentially single-family house plans, that could eliminate those design costs for people looking to... for people interested in new construction, and essentially, they will only have to pay for the labor and materials, and then the city would essentially cover the design fees because they are selecting from a pre-approved design. Those were the six strategies that did receive substantial support at the housing forum and on the survey. There were several strategies presented that did receive opposition as well. Some of those included requiring affordable housing or a fee-in-lu, reducing parking for low-income housing, and allowing all housing types in all of our residential zones. Those all received substantial opposition, and it's pretty clear that the community does not support those three. Some of our other options received a mix of support.
Can I ask about the parking?
Yeah.
So at the North Star Housing Forum that they had, they were talking about parking, and they were talking about reduced parking, but they were showing how you could actually accommodate that by providing certain garages and putting garages in a place where they're kind of hidden, so you don't really see them from the road. Is there any kind of talk or consideration regarding that with regards to eliminating some parking but opening it up someplace else?
We haven't discussed that at the staff level, but during the parking code update earlier this year, we did... the City Council did approve a low-income parking reduction of 20%, so reducing the required parking by 20% as long as, I believe, 40% or 50% of those units are reserved for affordable use. So we already have a low-income parking reduction here in the city, and a... but we haven't specifically addressed that concept that was brought up at the North Star.
Okay, thank you.
And garage parking is already allowed to be counted towards our parking requirements. That was required by a state law... a state legislation earlier this year.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ashton.
Yeah.
And so, just to reiterate, so in our draft plan that you have there attached, we do have Chapter... Chapter III does have the policies where we were able to at least get a start on taking some of these ideas and putting it into a policy format. And then as a reminder, this is just the policy part that specific allowed uses here, and that will be something that we had addressed through the development code update later on in 2026.
I have to apologize because I think I actually cut Ashton off. Were you through with your presentation?
I just have a few more sentences here.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
My apologies, yeah.
So I just wanted to cover those options that we received a wide mix of support, some opposition, some hesitation, and some support from the public. That did include the multifamily tax exemption program. The attendees at the program felt that we do need strategies for all of our income bands, though they were... they did have some hesitation for the MFTE program, some of the concerns that you've raised in the past, too, based off of whether this will impact the affordability deficit in the city and the tax concerns. We also felt... or we also... we also received a mix of support for some of the other options as well. That includes shadow plating. Shadow plating is a pretty technical concept, and it was pretty hard to explain, so we didn't... it was hard to gauge the support on that one, as well as... as well as the use of proportional fees. So making the smaller units pay less in impact fees than our larger houses, that one also received a mix of support. That concludes the housing forum and the survey.
Thank you.
So Tom, are you ready for questions, or is there more information that you'd like to share?
Okay, I'm afraid to say anything now.
Oh.
I'm kidding. So yeah, so if you have any questions about this, now's a good time to ask. If you have any thoughts or suggestions on the draft... on the content there in the draft document, now's also a good time to point that out, too. So we're all ears.
Thank you. Councilman Cock?
I was at the forum. I thought there was some really good discussion. And one thing that came up that I found interesting, and maybe you can expand on pros and cons of the reduced lot sizes, because by its nature, a reduced lot size would create smaller homes, right? Because setbacks and everything else.
Yeah, I don't have any... like, I can't prove that. I don't have any data behind that, but yes.
Yeah, generally, I think you hit it right on the money. A smaller lot size means a smaller house, and a smaller house means you pay less for it. So that sort of thing, kind of in combination with the unit lot subdivisions, that's really useful. If you have existing structures, multi-unit structures, say you have a duplex or a triplex, and someone doesn't want to be a landlord anymore, you can unit lot subdivide that off. And with having more flexible, you know, smaller lot size requirements, then, you know, you're opening up opportunity for homeownership at that point. So very useful.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you. So out of over 12,000 people in Seidra Woolley, you had 11, or give or take, people coming to this housing?
We had 13 responses to the survey, and I would estimate 15 at the Open House.
Because for that little teeny-tiny bit who agree or don't agree or whatever, as far as I'm concerned and the constituents that I would be representing, there are so many things on this that I am not in favor of at all of approving. Some things I think are great ideas and work around, but 90% of it, I'm not in favor of. So I think we've all talked about it at great length, cottage clusters, different things like that, so I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but I just wanted to give you that heads-up.
Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, guys, for working on this. I know it's a lot of work and it's a back and forth. It's an important one, too, so it's one of those things that I think that we should definitely be spending a lot of time on. The Planning Commission meeting that took place over in October, I believe, I watched that, it was a rather long meeting, and they seem to have, from my understanding, and I encourage anybody to go back and watch the meeting, a lot of the same views that the council seemed to share when we do... when we are able to meet. We do want to do more workshops like this, or have wanted to do it before we've gotten to so close to the deadline, of course, and we've asked for that. But they seem to share very much so the same views of densification. I like how you put it, gentle density. But they were... they were a bit more blunt in that meeting about how they felt that this ruling that's imposed from Olympia is affecting our community and how that is going to affect property values, it's going to affect the nature of our community, it's going to affect the way that we can densify the only options for building that kind of structure, which is accommodating 741 homes. Now, some of that, we can get around by doing some maneuvering possibly, but maybe get 100 homes into that over the 20... not 741, and they all, I think, consistently agreed. I didn't hear any one of them disagree on the fact that that's just unheard of, in that we really don't have a path forward unless we subsidize the... if we subsidize the developers, and then that still leaves us at a rate where it's an average $15,000 a year income that that 30%, 0% to 30%, would be taking in, which means that they're... all of their needs would be subsidized as well, and then there would also be resources that are used in the school system, in the fire department, and they made that point. They were very clear on all of that stuff, and I really liked how they did do it. I don't think it was represented super well in the discussion or the statement that was put forth here on what they were really conveying that I took out of that meeting. They still understand that there's a challenge, and so they're looking at how do we work it, but they were really putting forth, which I don't hear anything in here about, the impossible challenge that our community is being burdened with upon this, and how do we really accommodate that? To get 740 homes is very difficult, and that's the big challenge, as we all understand, is that 0% to 30% AMI. We understand we've got a surplus of homes. As we move forward with the climate element as well, which is instituting building with more climate-friendly materials, that's going to cost more, right? That's going to cost more for the developers, as well as increased costs and other ways. So it is a challenge. It is, and I don't know that we're really capturing the Planning Commission's voice as they're putting that forth. So I would recommend definitely looking at that. There are a couple of things with like, you know, duplexes to single-family, R5 to R7, I think, is that that would be pretty much, and strategically placing that around the community. I can hear the... or I see the concerns with that, you know, kind of derating the property value, but also the need to see that happen in certain areas in order to accommodate the housing or densification, things like that, especially with... I don't think that's going to solve the lower AMI. I don't know that any of this is going to solve the lower AMI levels, even the ADUs. I mean, you guys, you don't see a lot of ADUs coming forth right now, and it's because they get the ADU costs so much, but then the impact fees, bringing the city lines in, all of that stuff, that costs a lot. And so for somebody to put an ADU on their property with sewage and electrical and water, it's really expensive. So then they would have to charge a sizable amount of rent to accommodate that. So it's not hitting that 0% to 30% AMI either that I see. So I don't know, do you guys got a... like, a reasonable, sensible plan to address those areas? Even the cottage houses, the cottage housing isn't going to accommodate necessarily that focus point that we're trying to pinpoint on. It might help with maybe the 60% AMI, I want to say, and, you know, it's just not hitting the points that's really holding us up, that it seemed that that group is going around kind of grabbing a hold of in certain communities. around, kind of grabbing a hold of in certain communities. It almost put us into a position, and we're not pushing back at all, and we're at that, that point right now, of being able to go back to Olympia or join with Mercer or Kitsap and say, what are you guys doing to us? You're putting us in a position that's impossible to our citizens. We're going to have to tax them out of house and home just to accommodate that if we were to subsidize all those houses. And so as the communities gather and unify, and maybe interlocal or something like that in that aspect, we can go back to Olympia and say, hey, in our small communities, we can't do this. Can you work with us a bit more? And I don't think we've even tried to do that. So is there a way to do that? And also, is there a way to look at that densification? Is it really helped the zero to 30, all these proposals?
So I, I think that you asked some really good questions, and, you know, this has been a conversation that I know a lot of us have had. You're hitting the points, yeah. So first off, I want to say that we did invite the planning commission to come, just in case you guys wanted to actually ask some questions, but nobody was available tonight, as I understand it. And the second point is that sitting in on an AWC legislative, pre-legislative meeting yesterday, one of the things that they did talk about that's going to be discussed and put forth before the legislation is the question of how are they going to help cities buy property in order to help? Because the cities are going to have to buy the property in order for the build. The builders aren't going to be able to afford to buy the, buy the land and put everything in and whatnot. So there's going to be legislation that's going to be put forth, I don't know to what extent, but basically going to ask the legislation to help out with this. If you want these, you know, 30% AMI homes built, you're going to have to help cities make that happen, because cities cannot afford to do that.
Isn't that more taxes on us, though?
I can't, I, yeah.
The only way they get money is from taxing us.
Right.
So if we, if we ask them to find a way to buy land or help subsidize the building materials, we're asking them to tax us more. Please, please take more of our money to deal with this challenge that you presented to us. There should be immune communities or exempt communities or reduced, you know, impact on communities. 741s are acceptable for our little community, and so if it was maybe a third of that, or maybe a fourth of that, we can work with that. But what they're asking for, and I'm surprised we wait this long, Facet really, or anybody should have said, hey, red flag, guys, we need to start writing letters to Olympia now as we're doing this. We could probably accommodate a much lower rate, but I don't see a way, even if we rezoned everything, to do this. The math that put forth doesn't make sense.
I've already had these conversations with our legislatures. So, I mean, and any one of us could have done this, and it was actually, this information was brought forth, I gave this presentation six months ago, maybe longer, maybe a year ago, it was a year ago, because I just did my second presentation at Rotary. So over a year ago, we had this information, and we could have started writing letters then, you could have been talking to legislatures then or whatever. And I hear your frustration, but what, what we have here are people who, just like you and I, have been told this is what we need to do, and this is what we've come up with, this is our best options. That's what they're asking us to look at. So I don't want to be pointing the finger at them.
No, I don't not. And I hope you guys don't feel that I am in any way, like I opened up with. You guys are doing your job, and you're doing a great job of trying to figure out. But I'm sure that you guys have a challenge with vocalizing that you're with an impossible task. All of the measures put forth don't really accommodate the need of the zero to 30% AMI. And I have, I've reached out to legislatures as well, but I think that's similar to the idea of a collaboration, one person or one councilman, but if the whole council and the mayor writes a letter to Olympia a year ago, or, and we've asked for many more meetings, but, and we join with other communities, maybe Mount Vernon's facing this, or Burlington, or Mercer Island, and then we're like, hey, you know, is there a way that we're sending more letters to Olympia, let them know the challenge that we're faced with? But right now, they might come back and say, you guys have had a year and a half to present this, and now you're telling us that you can't do this. So I don't, do you really feel like we can do this zero to 30 with all the measures you put forth, Nicole, or Tom?
Just, just a friendly reminder, so tonight, we're not necessarily debating the merits of the different strategies. We're presenting the information to you that we have gleaned from our, our public meetings. And then we're also directing your attention to the policies that are in the comp plan. That's, that's our mission right now, is the comp plan, and making sure that we've got policies in there that align with the state's directive that we address these issues, but are not so specific as to narrow us down into a corner and committing to doing X, Y, and Z. Where that commitment to X, Y, and Z comes in is when we do our development regs later, and we take a look at the zoning code, and we take a look at the different areas, and we take a look at the, the policies that we have in the plan, and the feedback that we're getting from the community and the council and the planning commission, and then attempt to draft regulations that, that reflect what Cedar Woolley would likes to hear, would like to see in their neighborhoods. Just, I think you understand this, but it's not staff's role to go band together with other cities and go wage a fight with the legislature. This is not our job to do that.
Yeah, it's our job, Tom, for sure.
Yeah, yeah. We're on the same page then, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we all understand.
And I appreciate it. And that's the last thing I'll put on this, is I do understand that it's about doing the policy, and it's about getting those measures in place, but we only had 28 people really respond with the survey and the forum on this last go-around. We haven't had a huge amount of feedback. The planning commissions put back a really good voice about everything, and I understand they do get busy, but they've offered to meet multiple times a month to try and come up with a solution. The council's offered to meet a lot more often and have asked at different meetings, can we talk about this, can we talk about this? But you're right, it is on us. It's not on you guys, and I think you guys are doing a great job. I think Facet did a great job with what they had in front of us.
Yeah, and, and we're not quite there yet. We, we will be having those discussions with council on the planning commission on these different strategies, but we're not there yet. We, we, where we, so we have to kind of separate these two. So there's the comp plan, the policies, which are in there broadly written, and that's where we'd like your feedback now. And then when we get to the development regs, we start talking about, you know, whatever zoning changes or whatever, then we'll want your feedback at that time on, on those different strategies. So we hear you, but we're just not there yet.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Burns?
Sure. You know, looking through this, especially with what you just said, yeah, it is, yep. Especially with what you just said, Tom, I'm pretty good with this document. There are things that I think we can do that might make it better when we get to the implementation phase. I don't disagree that the zero to 30, I just don't see how this happens. The state better come up with a magic bullet or a new plan. I, I just don't see how any of this pans out to it. If you think that this is something that the state might not ding us on, like Mercer Island, where we end up having to litigate with them and redo the plan completely, then I'm open to moving this forward. I do think we are going to run into a ton of issues during implementation, but so far, I'm, I'm okay with what you've done in here. I don't see anything that's been egregious change to the city. I don't see rezoning anymore that I, I found as worrisome, so thank you for all the work that you've done. I know this is super challenging to try to figure out how to, to manage everything that the state is asking of us.
Okay. Paul?
Just, yeah, I just want to echo, I think there was a lot of good work done on this, and I've been around long enough that, you know, this is a requirement of the state, and you jump through the expensive hoops to put together the, you know, the planning, and these are really kind of many options, many good options that we can use. I agree on the, the lower end AMI, it is unrealistic, there's no way it's going to happen. But I think, you know, if, if we show progress towards that with some of these strategies, I think that, that would be very well-received in Olympia, I would imagine. But I also hope they come up with some better strategies, but consider, considering how stretched their budget is this time, I, I don't know. I, I'm not optimistic.
Councilwoman Diamond?
I would actually echo in Councilmember Lavaca's concerns as well, similar concerns that we've shared throughout the entire process. The other couple comments that I wanted to pass along here is, just a reminder, is that when the auditor was in discussing the multifamily tax exemption, he stated for the record in the council meeting that that was actually not beneficial to the community as a whole. So that is on record from the, the auditor, that, that didn't, while it sounds like, you know, it would be pleasing to some, it actually, the repercussions of it are actually not positive. So I just wanted to remind everybody of that, that meeting. I also wanted to note, I, I fully agree the zero to 30%, I really don't see being solved at all in here. And even when we're going back to talking about the cottage clusters, we were talking about the cottage clusters, but they were wanting to rent them back to the people that passed those programs at $1,200 a month. So $1,200 a month still puts you in above that 30% AMI. So we're, we're literally going in circles. The other thing in regards to that is that, and we're talking about housing now, but then we're talking about the climate element. So we're talking about the climate element, and they're wanting to reduce vehicle miles traveled, we're reducing vehicle miles traveled, but where are the jobs for these people to be going to? Walking to, riding their bikes to, that are going to help them get themselves out of that zero to 30%? Are we, as a community, and as a city, and as, in, in economic development, providing job opportunities for people to be able to work out of that when they're provided the opportunity? Do we have those opportunities? Or are we just going to become a low-income bedroom community with no infrastructure to support it and taxing people out of their homes in order to support that because the state asks for it? I mean, these are huge issues. So, I mean, just, just questions that consider, continue to come up, and the contradictions that come within themselves. I talked to a couple developers, and Councilmember Lavaca made a really good point in that all of these additional climate elements put on the developers are also going to raise additional costs, and those costs then are passed back down to the home buyer, or the renter, or whoever is, is purchasing and managing those. So it's, it's, nothing is free, right? It's just pushed out and spread elsewhere, so we run into that. I did talk to a couple people that have a decent amount of property, and in doing that, and a couple developers in, in regards to the rezoning issues, if they wanted to rezone the R5 to R7, they had no issue with it, but they wanted to just, fair warning, you're going to drive land prices up, because it's going to be worth more, because you can put more homes on it. So they said, by all means, feel free to do that. But that was in, in all honesty, probably, because it would be a benefit to them as a whole, as the property owner. So just my feedback.
Councilman Burns?
Sorry, I just have one more thing about the, the feedback on the survey. I don't know how we get more people to respond, but it would definitely give us a lot better idea of the public if we could find better ways to get that out in the future as we're doing surveys, because that kind of feels like a nothing burger. When I get 11 people responding, that, that does not give me an idea what the constituents really want. I could just go knock on 20 doors and probably get a, a more responsive field than that. I don't know if we advertise it on social media, and actually have to do some paid advertising, but something to, to get more responses would be great.
Okay. I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Oh, just one more, one quick question. The two ADUs that is state mandated to be implicated, when, when is, I know that's supposed to be processed by the end of the year, is that something that's just going to roll through council, or is that going, how is that going to?
That'll be addressed through our development regs when we go through that. It won't be addressed separately.
Okay. Do you know what the timeframe on that is? I had developers specifically ask me when they can expect that.
Okay, I think it was a year after the comp plan was adopted.
So I'll preface that by saying, even though we will address it through ordinance with the development regulations come March or whatever, it's state mandated that we go by those regulations by the first of the year. So regardless, I'm going to start approving those sorts of permits at the first of the year.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you, and thank you, Sarah, for asking that. That was going to be one of my next questions. So when we're looking at this, now then is not the time to say, like, of the 1 through 12 things in which is being proposed by the, put forward to us, you're just showing us these are the things, and then later we'll dive into that and say, no, blah, 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 and talk about Evergreen in the school district. And I know the school is not a part of us, but if you want to make it higher density, and then you're bringing in all of these homes, and we can't drink the water at the school, I mean, all of these things I'd like to be mindful of, so we'll talk about that later. Got it. Thank you.
Just, I want to check with Councilman Loy. Do you have any comments regarding the chapter three? Or Councilman Henderson? Okay, well, I'll move on to Councilman Clark.
Yeah, I just had a question. On the pre-approved ADU plans, are those, is there some more favored version out there, or how would you do that?
So when speaking with community members, the most realistic option would be for the city to either put out an RFP or search for an architect and an engineer. Then we would need to secure the copyright for those plans. I don't know what that agreement would look like. I'm sure our legal team would take a look at that process. And then, once that we, once that the city has secured the copyright, then we could, you know, those plans would be ours to be able to provide to the public, and those building, those plans then could be approved, pre-approved through a permit.
I'll add that they would rotate out from time to time as building codes and development regulations get updated, too.
Can ADUs be attached to existing homes? May address the sewer water costs a little bit.
Yes, attached or detached.
Attached or detached. Oh, I also had a little factual thing, it's the old editor in me. It might be in the transportation part, I'm sorry I didn't write down the page, but Fruit, in the plan, it said Frutile Road north of Highway 20 is 35 miles an hour, it's actually 25 miles an hour. I think from Highway 20 all the way to city limits, and then as it gets out in the country, it increases. But there's a lot of families that live along that road that would not want to see it 35 miles an hour. Thank you.
Okay. Good catch. Councilman Lavaca?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I was going to make a comment on that pre-approved plan, two for ADUs. I don't think that that would be a challenge at all for the city to have, and I'm wondering if there's a way to do, it'd be a little bit more difficult, but a pre-approved vendor or a pre-approved company that, you know, maybe in that RF5 or RFQ process, they kind of look at saying, okay, well, this is what we build, that you guys will be in lieu of, the, the design kind of changes, but we've built to the full, they, they agree to build to our full city code, and within a certain amount. So that might be an easier way to do it, is, do you think so, or?
The, excuse me, the, the plans would have to be reviewed by the building official or building inspector. If we have pre-approved plans, then, let's say, five of them were submitted, the, the building inspector, no matter by who, the building inspector would look at those and make sure that they are to code, and if they are to code, then we can offer those five plans as pre-approved plans. If a pre-approved builder doesn't mean that what they submit is necessarily to code, we'd have to review those one by one as they come in, as we do now. So it would be an efficiency.
Even with the vetted supplier. Well, that makes sense. The other thing is shadow plating, it's difficult, because the arguments I've heard, some, some people do want it, because they got a little piece of land, they want to sell some of it, and then they want to be able to live on the rest. I think personally, that's a good use if they wanted to bank some money or pay down debt or something like that. The other portion I've heard on that is that people will build into an area, and then we won't have infrastructure built to that area when they're next wanting to do the next plot. So they have to build either full infrastructure in, in order to do it, and I think we found that toward Wicker, at the end of Wicker Road, if I remember correctly. And so the shadow plating can create challenges as far as that goes. I, I would, you know, respectfully disagree with, with Councilman Burns on, we want to just pass it through, and there's going to be a lot of challenges or a lot of issues that come up, and we'll just deal with that later, because you get in a lot of challenges when you pass stuff through without having to nail down. So if we know that these are going to be some serious challenges, but it's just what the state's requiring, and we pass it through, we will, it may cost a lot more in the future, for sure. So, yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking on those. One last thing, so if we're, and I know that we're doing the chapter three, but we're doing the full policy, right?
The, the full plan, yes.
So on the, the Makers District, which is that LU 121, 12.6, I don't understand why we're changing that, and I think I had a conversation with you, I emailed you about that, we were going to discuss it at one of these meetings, and that was months and months ago. I don't know that you responded, but I did get a response, I sent back again to the mayor, the, just why change it if it's, if nothing changes on it but the name? And, and when I was... And, and when I was, um, I mentioned that I, the property manager didn't have any idea that it was going to be changed as far as zoning and that that conversation was something different. So I was just wondering, why are we changing it if it's not really changing anything? Um, or that the property owner itself of the entire area didn't know that it was getting changed?
Yeah, we, we did meet with the property owner and we actually did inform them, um, of this back in spring. Um, I didn't hear back from them. So that part probably didn't know about, those two parts. And then also, um, we're, uh, we're not changing the zoning. We're adding, uh, the overlay zone as additional allowed uses to that zone. Right now it's, um, the base zone is industrials, I understand it. And then the overlay zone adds, um, more things. That's been in the code for 10 years. And so what we're doing is saying, let's, um, get rid of the overlay zone. It's, uh, not necessary and let's add those uses to the existing, um, zoning. That gives them a whole lot more flexibility than what's allowed now by outright zone.
Isn't that something that normally the landowner would come in and request? I mean, why are we doing that on a?
We can propose it and then the land, the landowner is aware that we're looking at that. And, uh, we did offer them a chance to respond and we've not heard back, so.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of changing it if it really doesn't do anything. I mean, if the TCMO is...
It does a whole lot more for them, actually.
Okay. I, the conversations that I had was from, with you guys in the meeting we had, was it really doesn't do anything. It's just a name change. Um, you're not losing anything. You're not really gaining much. It's just a name change and that's all. But you're saying they now, there is change and they do get a lot more.
The, the change is allowing, um, is, is not, they can, under the overlay zone and the existing zone, they can do a whole lot. What we're doing is not removing any of those uses. We're just simply getting rid of the overlay and then attaching those allowed uses to the, uh, base zoning. It, they're allowed to do the exact same thing today that they would be next year when this is adopted.
It just seems like that would be something that we would notify. Like if I, if you were...
They are aware of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I got a different story, but all right. Uh, yeah, I'm not, not in favor of changing it unless we get, you know, some sort of dialogue there.
I can't imagine they would oppose being allowed to do more than what they...
Okay. Yeah, I, my only challenge about, I thought we had dialogue and so it was like, we had a big roundtable with the planning commission and, and it was like, no, no, they fully know. And then I was talking about using the Ford lot as a parking ride or a carpooling to reduce traffic.
I know that. I could show you the email I sent them.
Sweet. Yeah, I'm not too worried, but thanks.
Last spring.
Okay.
Yeah.
I believe it was dated June. Yeah. Um, yep. Commissioner, or Commissioner, Councilwoman Henderson, are you, I don't see your name up there.
Yeah, my, my son used my Zoom and I'm unable to change the name back, so, but yeah, I'm here. Um, I was muted before. Uh, so to add, uh, I do like the, uh, the option to provide, uh, pre-approved, uh, ADU or even single-family home plans. I think that's a great tool to keep the costs lower for, you know, say you have a family that finds some property and they want to build a house or something like that. That, that's fantastic. I, I do share concerns, um, that I'm hearing across the board with everybody else about that, uh, zero to 30% target that we're looking at. And, um, I'm, I'm not, I'm also not seeing a way, uh, to, to achieve that goal. So, um, it, it's a little daunting. And increasing, increasing other densities, uh, in order to try and get us to that point without getting to that point, kind of seems like we're making that effort in vain a little bit. Not to forget the fact that we would be, uh, adding to the burden of all of the services that we provide, um, not just the school district, but police and fire and all those other things. I am also very much hesitant to entertain the MFTEs and shift that tax burden onto the rest of the, rest of the taxpayers, so. But I look forward to continuing this discussion.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Councilman Cock?
Yeah, I had one other thought there. I read an interesting article about, uh, you know, 100 years ago, uh, most folks, I think it was like 80% of Americans lived on, uh, farms or maybe 120 years ago. And everybody kind of lived together, you know, grandpa, grandma, children, grandchildren. And it was a New York Times story talking about how a lot more relatives are moving back in, like kids with their, with their family, with their parents and things like that. So also looking at existing housing stock and how it can be, you know, not through huge expensive permitting, how it can be expanded and, you know, ADUs or add-ons to houses or even, you know, there's a house on Ferry that I think used to be a, it almost looks like it was a boarding house, you know, with two doors. You know, that kind of thinking is old fashioned, but it, it's, it's sort of, it seems to make more sense now. So just my two cents. Thanks.
Gosh, I'm trying to think, um, the zone that came out about, about five years ago, the zoning, um, where it actually would allow builders to get a, um, tax cut rate, but they had to agree to rent the apartment or the rooms or whatever that they were refurbishing, um, at a, I think most of it was at 30, uh, 30% AMI, um, for so many years. They had to do it for so many years. Is that something that is still available? I want to say that I thought, um, Senator Wagner put a bill into place...
Sounds to me like you're talking about the MFTE program.
Okay. Okay. I know Senator Wagner was on that. He put that together. Yeah. Okay.
So I kind of want to direct us to look at the, the comp plan a little bit closer. As far as the language in it, is there anything tweak-wise that you want to see us take to the planning commission in December 16th? Yeah?
So I think that, Madam Mayor, I think the language, I mean, it, it reads pretty good. And I mentioned that before when we had a meeting, there were some key issues within the policy and within how we meet the goals that I think that we've been going around about for probably six months or longer. But we've mentioned that there is some areas in the language which isn't required by state law that we probably don't need to have in there. And I think those areas have been mentioned and will be removed, um, at the end draft, I believe. And, and so there's areas in there with like the climate policy part that I, I put forth, prioritizing electric fleet for, for the city or things like that. I think that they're working on that too. The tree coverage, I think it's just encouraging is the word we used in a lot of those cases. So we made it pretty, pretty friendly as far as it goes. So it, it's nothing that's like enforcing. There are things that lead toward mandating as the next step, um, especially in amendments because it's already in there. And I think that's where our, where my concerns were. But I think in our, uh, couple meetings we've had, it's the language for the general plan, which has been a lot of work. It sounds reasonable for what is going forth, but some of those discussions that I know I really want to have, which it doesn't sound like we're able to really have that tonight as we're getting a month and a half away from being able to vote on it, um, are how do we deal with these huge elephant in the room issues to make this plan succeed when it goes back to Olympia? That, that's the conversation that I think we should, we should have at some point. But the language looked pretty good, so thanks for what I saw.
Does anybody else have any, um, comments regarding the language? Go ahead.
I put forth, um, and I don't know how the rest of the council feels on this, about the land acknowledgement and, um, in speaking with different members, um, that to me it's more important to see that we're working with the tribe in our plan, in our, um, comp plan and showing how we're going to be bringing things together rather than the land acknowledgement itself. I think it comes from a place of like, a hierarchy that you even give that land acknowledgement. I just, I, I don't care for them. I'd rather see effort being put forth that we are making. So I'm not in favor of the land acknowledgement.
To your point, you had mentioned that in a previous meeting. And I went back through the economic development section and addressed some of those opportunities that where we could work closely with the tribe. So I encourage you to take a look at that chapter and make sure that that is, uh, what you were getting at with ideas for working closer with the tribe.
But the land acknowledgement's still in there.
That's, I can't make that call, so.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm saying. So if we're doing that, then I don't think the land acknowledgement needs to be in there. But that's just me.
Go ahead, Councilman Cock.
Yeah, respectfully, I don't mind the land acknowledgement. The, the upper scheduled are, are neighbors. This was their land before it wasn't. And I think being, uh, friendly and showing some due respect to our immediate neighbors, there's nothing wrong with it. And, uh, I, I don't have a problem with it.
Councilman Lavaca, is your...
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, I was under the impression that it was already going to get pulled out because it wasn't their land before it was their land, before it wasn't their land. And they can go back and forth in circles and circles. And, you know, there's history of conquering throughout all, before we even got here, tribes conquering tribes and then people coming, bringing weapons and them getting weapons and conquering other tribes and becoming more. It's a complicated situation. And so land acknowledgement, I don't think is really the right thing. I think it's more partnering. Hey, let's work together. Let's see what we can do. And I think we're already doing that. I think they're wonderful neighbors and I think that hopefully we're good, great neighbors too. But land acknowledgement doesn't make sense because whose land is all land? I mean, everybody's come from somewhere and everybody's fought and, and strived for, oh, should we give it back to the Greeks or the Romans or Babylon? I mean, where does it go? So, I don't know.
Um, Councilman, Councilman Henderson, I see your mic, uh, your light is on. Are you wanting to make comment?
Oh, I'm, I'm unmuted. I, I was under the impression, um, from that prior discussion that, uh, we were going to take that out and we were going to, uh, dive deeper into, um, in lieu of that, obviously include in our plan, um, something very robust about our partnership with the tribe. But, that, that's all I had to add on that.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Cock?
Yeah, just respectfully, uh, Europeans most definitely took the land from the indigenous tribes. The history is clear and, uh, an acknowledgement of that fact is main, is, is a point of respect. And it's, uh, again, I don't see any point with it. And it wasn't the, the tribes fighting each other together. They were all, all their land was taken from them in North America by the Europeans, our ancestors. So having an acknowledgement of that it used to be their land, I think is a sign of respect. And it was, there were no Rome, ancient Romans and Greeks. They were in Europe.
Councilman Burns?
I would be in favor of leaving the land acknowledgement and especially if you're saying that you want positive relations with, uh, our neighbors, acknowledging that and then saying the things we'd like to do to have those positive relations with them is probably a good step in the right direction if that's what you actually want. I can see that I might not be in the majority wanting that in there, but, uh, I would agree with Councilmember Cock.
Is there any other language, um, that you are questioning or would like to make comment on regarding chapter three?
I'm just, uh, curious, Madam Mayor. So, um, the notes that were taken at the meetings that we did have for language changes, can we get a copy of that, that you guys are updating this comp plan to? Because I think there was a consensus of an, of a majority to leave certain things out, not to include certain things, this doesn't really apply. But it, you know, it's sounding like there's now deliberation on those same topics again. So it helps not to go around in circles if we know that that's already been done, I guess. So what's been done and what's not been done.
I did address that in a previous note, follow-up to councils. So you have that in your, in your records?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And I do appreciate what you added as far as working with them. I thought it was well done. Thank you very much for adding that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So our next, um, step is a planning, a public hearing. Um, and state requires that we have a public hearing at the planning commission. And so we will do that on December 16th. And from that then take, uh, any additional comments or edits that are, that are suggested that are appropriate to make and then prepare a final draft to send off to Commerce and start that 60-day review. And then, like I said earlier, um, bring a, a draft, a first reading of the ordinance that adopts it on, at the January 14th meeting. And like I said, we accept comments from anybody, um, all the way up to the point just before we go to adopt the final ordinance that adopts the plan.
Okay. On behalf of myself and the council, I want to extend huge thanks to all of you and to the planning commission for the work that you've done on this. I know that it's been a very long year. It's been challenging. You have, um, put in extra meeting times just to make this happen. You've also been down the road when you found out that things were kind of changed up a bit and you had to, you know, change up, uh, what you were looking at and what you were doing. Matt, I want to thank you for being here and all, all of you who worked so hard at Facet to make this all happen. It's been a long journey and, um, we're, we're right towards the end here. It is a very contentious topic. I get it. And, um, I don't know. What isn't contentious these days? I don't know. It just seems like everything's contentious. But, uh, anyway, I want to thank you very much for doing this. So, um, if there's no other comments or I am going to, um, move on to public comments. There is no new business, um, that we are dealing with tonight. So any public comments coming from, um, people within the audience here? Please state your name and how you're affiliated with the city and, um, keep it to three minutes.
Philip Murray. I think you should have a moratorium on the building in this city. The traffic is so horrendous, it's ridiculous. I just spent 25 minutes to get from Burlington to here. I was, the traffic was backed up to the, uh, next intersection past the hospital. It's ridiculous. If the state's mandate, mandating this building, construction, more and more of it, they need to take care of the infrastructure to get us here because there's only three ways in. If you have an accident on one, you're, you're stuck for hours to get here. It's absolutely ridiculous. We have no control over what goes on in the county, the construction that's going on out there or Lyman, Hamilton, concrete. Concrete has a huge area. They can build lots of houses and all that traffic's going to be coming through here and you're going to be fighting it from I-5 all the way up here. The state needs to take control and start putting three lanes on that freeway because, uh, there's traffic accidents on it every day constantly. It's ridiculous. And you're wanting to build more? Tell them no. You represent the people and tell them no, just like anybody can come up here and tell you no. Quit having the government run you. People are supposed to run the government. Thank you.
People are the government. Yeah. Anyone else? Anyone else who would like to make public comment? Okay. Hearing none. Uh, we are back next week, next Wednesday, um, 6 o'clock. And until then, all you all have a safe, safe evening.[1795.04]